We're in progress.
You want to turn it, listen to it. So Sarah's a little slow with the latest on there.
Please.
Go into a sound check, Sarah Beth turned on the volume.
It's still pretty loud. It's echoing a little bit.
Can you talk, can you please?
Yes. Okay, now can you hear me?
Yeah, keep turning it down a little more.
Okay, that that sounds better from your end.
Alright.
Okay.
Alright, so we need an order and roll call please.
Joe Meyer.
Here.
Case Ling.
Here.
Clint Hammer.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Raj.
Here.
I have a service says it's input and related best counsel.
Kevin Hemings, twenty one hundred and seven quarters. I just came to voice my opinion on ATVs and UTVs. Now that is you guys okay for the people to drive golf carts, sixteen year old kids. And I know it's supposed to be if they're going to golf cart or courts or whatever. If I could drive one of my air around sixteen and go a little out of the way, I'd probably excuse why I was going to the golf course when I wasn't going. I think, you know, we spent a lot more money on our stuff. We're a lot more responsible. I think you should. When I did my survey, I went door to door and I got almost two hundred names of people that wanted it. I went to West End. And somebody went around the southern parts and they got three hundred and fifty, three hundred and seventy five against it. And I talked to some of those people and they didn't have a clue what they were signing. And I did it the right way. I didn't lie to anybody. And I think you should bring it back up. And I did everything that that young man told me to do and it still didn't work for me. But everybody else got what they wanted. And now he's got golf carts and he wants. If he wouldn't give me an ATV or none, that's not right. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Any other best counsel? Okay, we will get set agenda. I haven't any help or separate discussion?
I'm here to move to the concern agenda.
I'll second.
Motion second, call roll please.
Clint Hammer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Raj.
Aye.
Joe Meyer.
Aye.
Case Ling.
Aye.
As approved by zero. We have a public hearing on the budget FY twenty twenty six, public hearing. To motion open the public hearing and arrest parties for against proposed budget.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Alright, this point we'll take input on the public hearing for the FY twenty twenty six budget. See everybody has a motion to close public hearing, so moves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you have resolution seventy seven, twenty twenty five, a resolution approving the FY twenty twenty six budget. Your motion?
I have a motion to set the resolution seventy seven of twenty twenty five, resolution approving the FY twenty twenty six budget.
Second.
Motion second, discussion?
Um, I have a discussion question. What are we approving? Are we approving the unappropriated funds or reduce the expense? What's what's in the motion? Because I saw in it, I saw we have the option to reduce expenses or um, unappropriated funds. So I didn't know what the motion, which what's in the motion?
That'll be council's decision with.
No, I that's why I just.
But yeah, but the motion just says we can collect, you know?
The I mean, the, you know, the the budget that you're approving is the same budget that was approved the first time around, minus the, you know, publishing day. Um, where, you know, we would like to make the designation for any, you know, decreases in budgets or use unappropriated surplus from fiscal year twenty five. That'd be at the discretion of the council and if you want to include that as part of this motion and amend the motion to include which direction you want to go with it, that is up to the city council.
But if the approved budget as is, just like you know, we can do the cut later to make up the seventy seven thousand. Or we could go in reserves or whatever and to bridge the gap.
Well, I I just, the way it was presented, I thought we had to make, we had to give our recognition.
There was a question that was presented as to, you know, which direction we were, you know, we'd go or where we, you know, we could make the cut. So I put that information to you before council. You can, you know, no decision has to be made at this time.
When when do we make that decision then?
We could probably make it as, you know, we go through next year's budget and, you know, we see how the spending is going and, you know, we can make any increases or decreases with the budget.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Okay, did it. Alright, we have a discussion. Call roll, what is?
Clint Hammer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Raj.
Aye.
Joe Meyer.
Aye.
Case Ling.
Aye.
As approved by zero, we have the public hearing of the budget. We have a motion to open the public hearing and arrest parties. So moved. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. This one will take citizens input on budget amendment for the FY twenty twenty five budget. See now there's a motion to close the public hearing, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Okay, resolution seventy eight, twenty twenty five, resolution approving budget amendment FY twenty twenty five.
I'll make a motion for approve resolution number seventy eight, eight later. Tell me if I'm if I like it.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Okay. Counsel, please. Call roll.
Clint Hammer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Raj.
Aye.
Joe Meyer.
Aye.
Case Ling.
Aye.
As approved by zero. We have a public hearing on the plan specification estimate the cost for the twenty twenty five asphalt loaded trail rehabilitation project. Motion open public hearing and arrest parties. So moved, second. Favor.
Aye.
This time we'll address the S twenty twenty five asphalt loading trailer we have funded. The motion close public hearing, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Nate, resolution seventy nine, twenty twenty five, a resolution approving plan specifications estimate the cost.
Sorry, I got the gun there a little bit. Um. Yeah, I guess just an update on this. We're planning to open bids on June fourth, so instead of next week. Um, quite a substantial overlay project this go around. Um, it includes, there's hopefully we're all time ahead, the central courts and sandwich drive and sandwich courts. Um, all of the streets in the Tusky Ridge subdivision. Um, a portion of Asbury Road actually is from the Radford intersection to the eastern city limits. Uh, and then there'd be a portion that we're going to pave um, between the treatment plants and the Forest Hills lift station. That's an access lane to the lift station for Wayne and his guys. And then also the Forest Hills trails and the Alt House Trail system. So quite a bit going on there. And a few other little things as part of those projects in those areas, just with some minor stormwater fixes and that. So, um. With that being said, all that covered the estimate on this is a little north of a million dollars, which I believe is in line with what we had estimated in the CIP for all those different projects. They just kind of got washed together for this year.
This is my counsel funding is rut and.
It's the currently for this project is a combination of sales tax, throw these tax.
One good question I had, um, on the trails, I know on the streets we do milling overlays for most part. Do they mill and overlay the trails or do they just tell you how they overlay the trails?
So it'll only be an inch and a half surface, um, overlay on the trail. So we won't even mill those. They're just going to overlay what's there. And then with that little lift that'll be on the edge, we have, uh, an amount of topsoil and seating to put in along there as well, just to adjust for that if need be. Um, and then when they connect on, you know, the streets and at different connection points, they'll just mill the small header out to match it with those.
Okay. And then are, does the overlay on the trails include around Alt House Con? Is that was I can say that last time?
That's in there as well, and it would just be paved uh, three inches. I would be in some plants for that, uh, around Alt House.
Okay, thank you.
Is this anticipated to be done this year?
Yeah, this will be done this year.
Oh, well not?
Yes. I mean, with with the overlay work, it's relatively simple compared to when we do like a reconstruction job. They they'll come in and they'll probably knock out most of the streets within a matter of one to two weeks.
Oh.
I mean, that doesn't go away.
Do you anticipate Asbury Road being shut down to do this?
I talked with one of the contractors that called about it. Um. They said that if they were to get the job, they would prefer to close it down just for one day. So they would do all the prep work and buildings and traffic going through and then they would shut it down for one day just to pay it maybe then open it up again. I said that would probably be fine. We just want to make sure everything's coordinated and extreme the world for that.
So does that go to the middle of Radford intersection or probably Redford? Where would the detour be? Would be on when they, would we turn traffic down Radford or would they have to be turned before then?
So Radford, the intersection itself will be open and the pavement's going to start east of that intersection just a bit.
So then the detour would be down Radford?
Yeah, and then probably have to go all the way to yeah, cycle. I'm not cycle on the whole road, sorry.
Okay, well, thank you.
Nate, we're asking the roundabout issue is yet to be done. Is this going to go hand in hand with that or is this going to be something about to redo while we do the roundabout?
No, this will be fine. The reason why we're doing the overlay actually this year is because the, we added that one in for this year is because the roundabouts can be done next year. We figured we didn't want to try and coordinate that effort at the same time in that location. And this won't impact the the roundabout project and you.
Okay, the motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution seventy nine and twenty twenty five, approving the plan specs and estimate the cost for the twenty twenty five asphalt roads and trail rehabilitation project.
Second, if I have a discussion? Call roll.
Clint Hammer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Raj.
Aye.
Joe Meyer.
Aye.
Case Ling.
Aye.
As approved by zero. Move on the whole business who have second reading ordinance two of twenty five, ordinance amending chapter one zero five, collection of solid waste, recycle of journals and yard waste.
I'm going to request one on the.
No, Bobby, I've not had any, um, comments that have come in since the last council meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number two of twenty twenty five.
Second.
Motion second to approve the second reading, discussion? Call roll.
Clint Hammer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Raj.
Aye.
Joe Meyer.
Aye.
Case Ling.
Aye.
As approved, there's a motion to waive the statutory rule.
I'll make a motion to waive the statutory third reading.
I'll second that.
Motion second to waive the statutory ruling requiring second orders be considered and voted on for passage at three council meetings. Part of the meeting which is to finally be passed be suspended. End of the day, you can't. You have to raise it. There's no noise. And tracks such as what we're going to pay, so.
Tear the bandaid off.
Hmm?
Tear the bandaid off.
Well, we we do believe that the reserves and at this point it has to be zero. We can't, oh, you don't subsidize with, uh, jump funds, you know, you have to raise it. If or not pay the counter. Alright, call roll on the waived statutory rule and finally passes it out.
Clint Hammer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Raj.
Aye.
Joe Meyer.
Aye.
Case Ling.
Aye.
As approved by zero, and you have ordinance three, twenty twenty five, and ordinance amending chapter ninety, water systems, second reading.
Hang on, sorry. Do we have to, we have to pass ordinance? Don't we? Isn't, do we have to do items C?
Why include that? Probably shouldn't have. So we just wouldn't.
We wait, we we did a motion to waive it and then we have to have a motion.
Okay, you're right. My head, I mean, is there a motion to finally pass it out? Or just two of twenty five?
So moved. Second.
Round discussion. Thank you, Rush. Call roll please.
Clint Hammer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Raj.
Aye.
Joe Meyer.
Aye.
Case Ling.
Aye.
Okay, let's move on to ordinance three, twenty twenty five, ordinance amending chapter ninety, water systems, second reading.
Make a motion to accept ordinance number three of twenty twenty five, the ordinance amending chapter ninety, water systems, our second reading. Second.
Motion second, discussion?
Any citizens calling though? Does one particularly?
No.
Nobody. How many paper bills go out?
How many paper bills go out? Well, we have approximately a little over two thousand total bills that go out for accounts. Um, Becky just told me today that about a little over six hundred are e-bills that remain. It would be big bills.
And over six hundred?
Yeah.
And?
About fourteen hundred.
Okay.
Discussion. Call roll.
Clint Hammer.
Nate.
Miller.
Aye.
Raj.
Aye.
Joe Meyer.
Aye.
Case Ling.
Aye.
As approved for one, is there a motion to waive the statutory rule? So moved.
Second.
Motion second to waive the statutory rule.
I'd like to give citizens one more chance. If anybody needs that soon?
We're not taking away their option to give a paper bill. They still have that option.
The way the third reading will go on for that.
But they can keep things as they as they are now. With a little paper bill. I think more than it's a help. I don't, you're wanting, but here she's just, I know she's, it's next thing you know. Yeah, I have not, I think it's always been if somebody wanted to bring it back, I I think that that's what we've done in the past. So we did bring it back. We didn't find anything, but she wasn't bringing back for a third reading. I mean, that's both.
Morning. Again, I'll pass the motions to waive the statutory rule. Call roll please.
Clint Hammer.
Nate.
Miller.
Aye.
Raj.
Aye.
Joe Meyer.
Nate.
Case Ling.
Aye.
Alright, as approved, and the motion finally passes and that ordinance three of twenty twenty five. So moved. Second. Last call, Nate. Call roll.
Clint Hammer.
Okay, which one we have?
This. Right the chat.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, Nate.
Miller.
Aye.
Raj.
Aye.
Joe Meyer.
Aye.
Case Ling.
Aye.
Second is approved for one. First, the business item was resolution eighty, twenty twenty five, a resolution considering and accepting bid for fifty one thirty three Asbury Road.
The city, uh, took bids on the property. And we received, uh, two bids, one from DCW Real Estate in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars, one hundred thousand, five hundred dollars. And the second one was from K construction LLC in the amount of sixty thousand dollars. Um, council has the option to accept the highest bid or reject all bids and then um, address, you know, how you want to, what you want to do with the property we're supporting.
One of the questions I had raised earlier, and maybe where's Nate gone? Um.
Either the question was time to.
Okay, the question I have is just if if we have to destroy, we have to take down one of those two houses. If this house is in worse shape, could we shift the roundabout slightly to the east and then keep the other house intact? Uh, versus, you know? It's just a thought. This is for discussion. I'm.
Well, in original design, we did take that whole house and ask the needs, what can potentially salvage in one or save in one? And I don't know the reason why it was this one.
I think it's probably the angle, but that's why it was a woman at the back of it.
Steve, if they step on, another thing is, um, there's an angle next to the other house to maybe that, by any means, it wasn't in his decision, but it seemed like that was a logical one. If you're terribly high, you get two and ten lots adjacent rather than empty lot of house and empty lot of house.
And I'm assuming based on one of the bidders that both houses would end up being torn down.
Well, I didn't read that, but that.
Well, I'm assuming, I think I know who DCW is.
No, you didn't.
If I know.
Did, yeah. Oh, I don't know. He wasn't, I talked to Nate. I only gave him this plan.
Okay.
No, I.
No, all I was just, I'm just throwing it out there is, is we had, we were going to salvage one of them.
Yeah.
Um, maybe.
Yeah, he can answer the question. Why pick that one?
Yeah, I'm assuming it's because they got, you know, keep that angle, you know, curve, because all the way you come back and kind of.
And they are in designs. I don't know.
Yeah, no, I don't know if it's even feasible at this point. It probably costs.
Nate, the question is, when we asked to realign the roundabout that potentially salvaged one of the two houses, why was this one chosen as the victim? Or I'm sorry, why was, why did you choose it when you did?
Why did we choose which one for demolition or?
Yes.
Um, just with the way that, uh, Bradford would align with the roundabout, square everything and the best alignment for the roundabout. That's why that house was killed.
Yeah, what what my question was, Nate, was is given the condition of the one house that fifty one thirty three, would it be possible if we had to demo one of them, could we demo that one and keep the other one? Or or that would just change the dynamics of the whole thing, right?
We could look at it, but I want to say what I recall when I, I, and I feel like this question had even come up before with the design team. Is that the way the radiator worked and lining everything, it was going to be too tight if you started passing the east? I can ask that question again.
Not necessarily. Somebody could.
But I believe that that's the situation now.
Is there a motion to accept even then and just reject?
I'm.
I'm, I was giving except the sixty thousand.
No, go ahead. I'll make a, I'll make a motion to accept the high bid and bond with this.
I'll second.
Good.
Right.
I don't need, I don't need that.
Do you know what I can cover? You're just going to take a little less. I don't, I have, on a bidding process, can we cover? I mean, we either have to accept or reject.
Yeah, we did. It's the same thing. If if we do not accept the high bid, recommendation will be to engage and or be able to some somebody professional that would do some rehabilitation, some clean up. I mean, I'm just saying. Um, we would not listen again. If we did it again, it has to be done. But it's a real interesting.
If if the council doesn't mind, I kind of will weigh in on this. Um, when the the bid came in at a hundred thousand, I thought that was probably a fair bid. The house has a lot of, well, you all won it, but it has a lot of issues. There's leakage in foundations that needs to be addressed and anybody that takes over this property has, uh, has got a serious investment on their hands to rehab that facility.
Just just out of curiosity too, I believe this house has a well and this, this, this is as is and the guys, they have to take care of their well, not us.
Yeah. Good point. Everything does is.
Everything's as is.
I do give the impression from your account, I really do, but maybe maybe isn't.
What do you think that blocks worth? I think that's, I think that, I think that's what he's looking at is the cost. Valuable lot and for potential business that down the road, I mean, uh, the house is going to need a lot of work.
And you probably, your, your top dollar value for the lot without any structure on it is probably sixty grand. Top value.
It's not a big device, is it?
Approximately, it's pretty good.
Because it's considered.
Why is it that it was all the way back?
I get what you're saying, but look where it's going to go. It's, it's going to be pinched to on three sides with real work.
Yeah, no, I, I.
The other side is we were going to take a loss on both houses. So if you got ten bucks, you're ten bucks the engine original. That's how I even thought. Um, yeah, they have a key on a side that's, yes, never set foot on it and did it all this and that. Just said, no, what's wrong? They need, and I said, yeah, they need a bit of a ten bucks. They was ten percent or five percent. Get a disease. Alright, I'm got one off. So.
Nate, do you see any potential problems if we sell this a lot?
If you.
If we sell this building and that lot, do you see any potential problems for the roundabout going through?
No, we we took, um, what was necessary from that lot as far as right away goes. I, it's going to function just fine if that house reists.
Good, thank you.
We'll still have a more joint.
There's a building more joints for the entire board over.
So what?
There's a building four joints that attack over.
And that doesn't include interior renovations. They can't get it on, but they can do rehabilitation or run inside for the most part. Right? Okay.
So the question that I have, you want to take the loss and make something fifty cents on the dollar is better than nothing on the dollar. That's just my two cents. If you're questioning me again, what what do we have in there? Is it one fifty, right?
For the, we purchased, um, both the houses. So we both purchased both houses and just four hundred and ninety thousand.
Yeah.
So nobody don't tell me that.
That's houses. So so the motion is just to accept a hundred thousand, how big and I do it in seconds.
Yep.
Okay, and then discussion? So the resolution eighty, twenty twenty five is is accepted as a hundred thousand dollars from DCW properties.
Do you have the second line, Jim?
Yeah, I believe. Rest, rest, yeah, I think we'll see. Okay, there's no discussion, call roll please.
Clint Hammer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Raj.
Nate.
Joe Meyer.
Aye.
Case Ling.
Reluctantly, aye.
It has been just approved before the. Okay, here I wait for this one. Ordinance four, twenty twenty five, ordinance amending chapter fireworks, no reading. That's enlightened.
Yeah, this one ordinance amendment is courtesy of your Iowa legislature. So right now, the Iowa legislature has, um, they have approved that the dates of July third, July fourth and December thirty first, um, all across the state of Iowa, that fireworks, um, can be set off on our legal. So this ordinance amendment is to line up our ordinance in line with what the, um, state has proposed.
Mandating.
Mandating, yes, to mandate.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's fast and you know if they're signed off on it, it's like, it's not speaking different. Steve, do you know, I mean, do we even, if the fireworks are illegal during the forty hour window, there are an ordinance we've been forced to nuisance or noise then, right? The state law that's superseding?
This hourly economy, uh, is one thing that they would be starting for, but they actually got rid of this hourly economy, which is a loud, rapturous voice. So we can't even sign anybody for that. Um, in my opinion, I think it's a good thing that it's legalized within the city. Because we literally run call to call to call third or fifth, should subtract and enforce it. And it's everybody else is doing it and all we do is give complaints when we go to try to stop them. And it's not just one house. It's it's, in my opinion, it's minimal advantage to the people that are in service for the third and fourth and fifth. It's all our work. But it's enforceable. It's, it's enforceable. It's, it's taken up a lot of the power. The county will not assist with us with it because the county, they might even come in and ask for it if they're or the fifth, uh, the system.
Is is there a timeframe of of the days that it, that it's allowed? Is it twenty four hours a day? I mean, forty years and a half.
We need that or something.
No, I thought. I thought it was after eleven. There was a timeframe at where it cuts off at nine.
I didn't look it, I didn't look it code, but that, it's good.
Regardless, we, so are we, are we just saying that we're going to adopt state code? So if the state does have a timeframe and then we're, we'll abide by that timeframe?
I, I don't have to look at county codes, or I believe county code was midnight.
That's what I was thinking. It was midnight or.
I haven't read it in a while, but I believe there's a time.
Yeah, that's what I thought. And I just wanted to make sure that ours was in twenty four hours a day. If the state code says it, you've got it cut off at midnight. You know.
But the table.
Should we take it until we're home?
I should have your vision. I guess if we can't handle emergency advance fireworks, so.
I would just say, because if we adopt, if we adopt state code with this, this, uh, whatever the state has, if they. Whatever the state passed, if they have a timeframe on it, then we adopted that, right? Is that, can we do it that way?
And about to find you table that, so it isn't immediately.
Yeah, I mean, I, we're going, we have to do it because the state's important. I just didn't know if it. I I, you know, I want to shoot off fireworks at three in the morning if they can, state code and allow that.
If there is a trial someone, do we have any? Recallable saying, no, you can't shoot off fireworks because of fire hazard.
I don't think they address that either.
This is basically, there's nothing that we can do here. That that's what I understand. So even if I vote no. It still would affect.
Right, this this suggests putting up the ordinance because it's, and it's not enforceable, right? I mean, I would, I would encourage you just if the first reading, you get the question answered, it's like reason that Brad gave you, you have no choice.
What what happens, what, how about we do this, right? We approve the first reading and then bring it back and at, by the second reading, we'll have that answer.
Right, because then you consider even table. And if you table it, don't ever touch it, the ordinance is on the books, so nobody can write a citation on it, so this is strictly administrative. Putting up the ordinance.
So if 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 somebody shoots out fireworks though and they start a fire because of the fireworks or they're shooting fireworks and. And stuff from the fireworks ends up ends up on your property, is that? Right, let's use. Remember, if they start a fire, what is that said?
There's still been the other three hundred and sixty-two days a year.
Yeah, no, I I understand. I just, it's.
Forgive me for pointing out the obvious, but if it starts a fire, like case in point, I had to lay shingles on my roof. You know, so it burns the house down. Oh, too bad for me. I mean, come on. Uh, I'm sorry.
How do you approve who started? If that's the same thing that we're talking about.
So I think we should table, that's my personal opinion, make a motion such and we'll get those questions answered for you.
Okay, I'll make a motion to table.
Motion to table in a second. I'll second, all in favor?
Hi.
Close. Okay, okay, I just, I heard one actually, I'm sure I heard correctly. So the motion table is four one?
Yes.
Okay, all right, that's fine. We will uh, our event right back. For the for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, then we will move back to um public input for any not previously discussed. All righty, when you have our door P M Z reports. Questions for balance, motion to accept.
I'll make a motion to accept the report that's presented. Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Close. Um. That's uh, we get a roundtable. Wouldn't you want to talk about Radford Road?
Yes, interestingly enough, um, the property at Bradford Road. Um, fifty-one thirty-three. We received an offer over the weekend um in the amount of. Two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. And um, we can't take official action. On it tonight because it's not on the agenda and we didn't have a chance to, you know, post it. But um, kind of looking for consensus that, you know, council is willing to. You know, consider that bid. Um, the property has been on the market since January. This is the best offer that we received in that period. I've received a couple, like it's a two oh five and two ten. And I just went right ahead and rejected them figuring that we could do a little bit better on it. The, I look at the county. Assess our website value on that. It's assessed at two twenty-five. Um, this house also has made probably the most impact on it as far as. You know, we put the connector into from Halesville into Bradford. It really impacts their front of their house because it, you know, takes probably what's a fifty-foot frontage down to about thirty-five foot of frontage. So. You know, I just am looking at, you know, council, you know. Do you want me to take them back and, you know, get a counter offer? Do you want to take them back and accept the offer? My recommendation, talked to Jim and I, um, talked to a realtor today and. We feel it's a solid offer and, you know, it'd be a good idea to move forward with it, but it is. A council decision, you know, as far as like we just did with um. Fifty-one thirty-three as we wrote, if, you know, that's what, you know, which direction you wanted to go.
And if there's a consensus, then we will have the publication have a short meeting on Friday.
Well, I was looking Thursday at noon is if I can get an agenda out tomorrow morning, um, so that we can set a meeting for noon and then, you know, take action.
Had to get this on Friday because of updating this this agenda and put it on the place over there. They don't want to answer, obviously, so they accept that the, yeah, we accept it often, continue to see that had council approval, we'd get it by. Five o'clock Friday.
Right.
So we give, if there's consensus, not that, at least want to publish the agenda and discuss it formally. Will proceed, doesn't mean you're obviously committed at this point, just you're committing to a meeting to. Pause on that, Bryce.
I think we move forward and take it, you mean, a little disappointing, they're disappointing, but I mean, what we're going to do, actually, we've been. Been out there since January and this is the best we got so far. Charlie.
I say move forward.
Okay, check your calendar, what time is Thursday then?
Looking for noon and we'll make it a virtual meeting in case you're out somewhere and you can't make it in the office, but. Or you golf or she can just go on your golf, yeah.
I just got played an awful bad word for late, so.
I'll, I'll just play nine that morning and.
We're going later.
I can be here by.
Obviously, if you want to go later.
Whatever you want to do.
Or you can like go two or three. I mean, I guess I would probably have to know what's the best time for Thursday for folks.
This Thursday?
You're lying. That would be fine with me. I have to go to the news. You get.
I'm just trying to come to.
You drive fifty strokes in before then. Three o'clock, Thursday?
Anytime afternoon, maybe noon or later for me, it's fine.
Karen, good. All right, we'll do three o'clock. Get her filled in and and we'll probably just use a conference room, okay? So no, no formal action, we will obviously attend and get that up to you for three o'clock on Thursday. Then we'll go to the roundtable.
Great. Um. Yeah, it's been, it's been difficult decisions to manage, but it's been things with. Not not what they want to wait long, but uh, the one thing I would like to let council members and people. Uh, in the chambers of all, there is a blood drive at the fire department. He has a fire department on Thursday afternoon. So if you don't even, well, it might be an opportunity for you. The council meeting.
Yeah. I love. So I'm not a boss. Um, and then I. Nothing very again.
Nothing very.
Okay, I don't think that you.
None, not good.
All right. Thank you, Eric. So moved.
So we had, yeah. Uh, so this is implemented and again, albeit.
Jay. Quick. Uh, sorry, so I want that state statute for fireworks, just so you know, uh, seven point seven point two subsection. For meeting one states between hours of nine AM to eleven PM on July fourth, Saturday, Sundays immediately proceed following July. So that's in state code, December thirty-first, nine AM and twelve thirty. Between the hours of nine and eleven on the day of the first. So there is a timeframe for the dates after eleven, so I would assume that they're going to make it mandatory. That's the word to probably just change the state statute. So it could possibly be enforceable after eleven.
Anywhere in state, yeah, yeah, or anywhere stated as, okay. All right.
That was a moving, that's a creative.
Hey, as soon as you're even current. It's good.
Absolutely. One, I just got.
That that was the one that was last year and the changing of it, if they're making it mandatory. When they start changing statutes, it's very minimal what they changed in a statute. So I would assume that's going to be the guideline throughout, aside from making. Your municipalities are changing implications.
All right.
Thank you.
Was there a motion during that? All in favor? Sorry, we should speak for the first set of, all in favor?
Hi.
In danger.
Jim, the way you're going, you should probably go last Thursday, you might have much left for Bradford.